Are we pretty much good to go now?
Yeah, you're good to go.
Okay, alright, I'm calling, it's all recorded and everything, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I'm calling to order the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three South Borough zoning board appeals. Um, this meeting is being held virtually. Those wishing to watch or participate remotely can do so by accessing the meeting link at uh, ma-southborough.civicplus.com slash six seven four slash virtual dash meetings. Okay, so we have a couple hearings on the agenda tonight. The first one's Five Thayer Lane. Do you, uh, do you have the, the, um, the thing there to read, Laura?
Um, we, I don't think we need to read it because it's a continuation.
Okay, you're correct.
From November second, so I'm moving them over now.
Okay.
Hello.
Good evening. Uh, if you, if you could just identify yourself, you know, we can see in there.
Sure, yeah, I'm Christie Benson and I'm a resident at Five Thayer Lane.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
And, um, Ms. Benson, do you have anything to present tonight? I mean, we do have the materials that were provided, but I didn't know if you had something to add to that.
No, we, all the materials that have been submitted are kind of everything that we're planning on submitting.
Okay, alright, alright, and so I think, I, I would think at this point, all the members have really had a chance to look at it. I took a drive by your property today just out of curiosity and I noticed you have, there's a sizable sort of, um, there's a wetland there that is part of the yard, so I.
It's a, yeah. It's a retention pond.
Retention pond, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, it, it, it sort of looks like, um, I, to me, what jumped out is I said, well, when we bring up topography and limits on a, on a lot, that certainly seemed to fit the bill, but, um, uh, but you don't, you don't really have anything more to add to that. You just, um, you're, I guess to summarize, you want to put a sh- you want to have a shed that's within the, the setback, correct?
That's correct, yep, and the, the shed will not interfere. There's a gate that, um, that is access to maintain the retention pond, um, and so that will, it won't inhibit access to that gate or the ability to, you know, maintain, um, that, the retention pond.
Okay, alright. Alright, well, um, why don't we, uh, uh, let, let's just see if, uh, some of the board members have any, uh, questions or concerns for you. We'll start with, start with Mike. Mike, do you wanna, do you have any questions on this?
Yeah, so I, I took a drive by as well. Um, so there's the existing shed, and then you're adding an additional, correct?
Yes, so, so, long story is, we were a little naive to this process, um, so there's two sheds that we're looking to basically now have permitted in the proper order. We just weren't, weren't, we were naive to this whole process. So the one shed you can see is act, is from the street. That's probably the one that you could see. And then we have one that's basically more in our yard that is just, uh, storage shed. Um, and so when we came to the appeals, they basically said, you know, that shed's there as well, and, you know, we should kind of get, because technically, I think the corner of that is within a variant of, um, forty-three East Main Street's corner. Backlot.
So, you're, it's another, I'm just trying to figure out the size of the next shed.
Um, so the, the, I know, I don't know if I have the exact measurements of the other shed. It's smaller than the one that you can see from the street.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it's smaller than, yes, yes, it's smaller, yeah.
But, uh, are you, are you proposing to move it because the, the paperwork shows an existing location?
Yeah, 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 so the, the resident forty-three East Main Street would like it us to move it um, forwards sixteen feet from where it's now.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So closer to the street.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Mike, do you have other questions?
Uh, that's all I have at the time being. I just, I, I wanted to get my head wrapped around because I, I see that, I, I saw the shed and I'm trying to get the idea of the dimensions and what's being proposed and go from there.
Alright, uh, Jamie, do you have questions?
I, I do. Um, I also drove by today. Um, it looked to me, and, and based on the letter I saw, it looked to me like the, the shed that's next to the street is really more of a garage. Um, and it said that it holds a vehicle. What vehicles in there?
Um, yeah, so that's what we would be proposing, um, is that it would be just, uh, a vehicle that we don't use all the time, um, and so it wouldn't, I wouldn't be saying it's, right, a vehicle's gonna be pulling in and out, but not on a daily basis. It's more of a seasonal use.
So, I mean, I would describe that more as a garage versus a shed.
Hmm.
Um, that's how I feel about it. Um, and then I did drive up so I could see in your backyard, and I agree that there was I guess somewhat limited flat land, but I still could see space for at least the smaller shed up in the back there. It seems like there would be space that it could be put there, but it was hard to see, just, I didn't want to get out and walk in your backyard. Um, so is there a spot you could put it in your backyard, or?
So, no, we have a, the, because of our septic system, so kind of all of our flat part in our backyard is, is septic, and then our septic access, and then we have a pretty steep drop on the, the right side of our backyard. Yeah.
I, yeah, I saw that. I think I was looking, I guess it was the way back, straight back from the back of your house. It's like there was a fairly good amount of flat land there. So I don't know how much you need to access the septic.
Yeah, I mean, our, we have two access points back there, and then, and then it's pretty much all, I mean, it's the entire, like, our flat yard is is like right under our septic, um, there was pretty much our septic takes up our flat yard, and then we have the two access points staggered around that.
And, and where exactly is the gate to access the retention pond? It would be kind of in between those two sheds on the strip, is that what you're saying?
No, nope, it's, it's more closer to the street. So you could, you can access the gate from the street.
Oh, on the front there going up there?
Correct.
And is that, I guess, is that typically how it's accessed? I, I don't, I'm not gonna pretend to know a lot about retention pa- ponds because I don't.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's always, yeah, I mean, it's always been easily accessible to, like, from the main road.
Okay, well, I'm curious what other people's questions are, um. To me, I, I think the big question is, you know, the shed that's not really shed, it's more of a gar- a third garage.
I lost Jamie for a little bit.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
I can now.
Yep.
Okay.
I missed the last, like, word or two on that.
I just, I just, I just said, I just said, um, I'm curious to see what, what other members think, but I, I viewed that, that shed more as a garage than a shed personally, um, and then hearing that it is storing a vehicle, um, obviously backs that up.
Yeah. Um, Paul, do you have questions?
Uh, I, you know, I actually don't have any questions, you know, so full disclosure, yeah, I kind of drive by there every day because I live on East Main Street.
Okay.
But, uh, I'm not a, I'm not a direct abouter about twenty-nine East Main Street, so, but I'm pretty familiar where, uh, where the property is. Um, i- is far, Jamie, that, um, I'm not even sure, as far as the distinction between a shed and a garage, um, does that have, from our standpoint, does that have, I don't know if that, I don't know if that, does that make a difference, like, from a, from a permitting or a technical standpoint, because I mean, sure, if there's a vehicle in it, but if it's a shed and you've got a lawnmower in it, like, does that, you know, does that make?
Uh, yeah, I was hoping David or, or Mike could answer that question. I actually don't know the answer. I just know that we've had specific requests for garages, for a third garage, um.
Right.
And I don't know if that changes the standard.
Yeah, because I know, like, like, I know in the past, too, we've had people quantify something as a barn, and in a sense, it was like, you know, barn-like, but it was, you know, meant to be a six-car garage. Uh, I guess it's, uh, semantics, but when you get to that many garage bays, then it does trigger a variance. But, I mean, if there's, uh, there's currently, you know, it's not like there's currently a three-car garage, and this would make it a, a fourth car garage type situation, so I'm not sure if it, if that, I, I, I mean, I, I don't have the exact, but I'm not sure if that makes a, a super difference. My, my, I guess my biggest question or concern is how the folks at forty-three East Main Street feel about this, and if they're okay with, or, or endorsing, or you know, not, not contesting where it's proposed to be placed, then I think that, that, that's quite a lot.
Yeah, so we actually, we've had, had, um, some good dialogue with him, and actually recently, he did give us a letter of support that is submitted with our documents.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Doris?
Oh. Good evening. Hi, Christie.
Hello.
Okay, so I've been by the property a few times. I'm on overlook. I'm not far from you. I, I passed it twice. Uh, I, so I, I read the application like Jamie did. Uh, I know I have a lot of questions. I could see that it's gonna be a garage. You can also see there's sort of a temporary driveway that comes out to the road, so, um, the, and, and just to confirm, it, it sounds like the shed came first, secondary shed, not the, not the movement of the back shed, this, this secondary shed, the secondary shed came before the problem that then you found out that you needed to have a variance or a special permit for that. Is that right? So the shed went in, it looks brand new, and.
Yes, exact, yes, and then, yes, and then we, yes, we were, this was all brought to our attention, and then we.
I see, okay, alright, so, um, so I can understand.
Working to address this inside, yes.
Okay, so my question is, so my question became, as I read through the application, um, um, and I saw that the application had attachment of this very complex, to me, it seemed complex trust document about the water drainage into the pond for the neighborhood and the maintenance of the neighborhood to keep the drainage, the stormwater, um, and I'm not, by no means an engineer, um, you know, uh, so we don't have water running, I would assume, to other properties, whatever the things that can happen when water is not going in the intended, uh, spot. So it went on to say, from a recommendation, um, to, uh, get a, 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 an engineering approval that the placement, um, maybe the second shed too, um, that this doesn't really impact the movement, uh, of the water into the pond, and that, and then the pond did not look maintained, in my mind, maybe because it's the fall, um, so did you not know that there was a trust when you moved in the house, into the house? There was a trust document, um.
Oh, yeah, and we've been in, uh, well, we've been in full communication, so before we, that, with, uh, with all of our HOA, um, neighbors, so we were, that's, would we, before we even placed the shed, we actually asked everyone in the HOA if they would be okay with us placing a shed there. Um, so, there was a part of us, we thought we were doing our due diligence in that sense, and, but then obviously, we, we didn't, we missed the town piece, but yes, they were all aware, and we hadn't asked if they were all okay before we, we placed it there.
I see, okay, so then my, you said my question becomes, I thought I read there was a recommendation to get an engineering approval for the shed. Does, did anybody else read that, or am I misreading that, or do we have that? However, I can phrase, phrase question. Do we need that, have that?
I don't think that's necessary.
I'm not saying it's necessary. I'm saying the trust is saying it's necessary, and a recommendation, it's in the packet. There's a recommendation to get it from, uh, maybe help me here, Laura, so I don't have to flip around. Uh, between the.
I think it was from the com- convert, Conservation Commission is recommending it before, before we approved the variance, they suggested, um, that we, that we get approval, a report from a engineer that sortifies that there's good access, um, and that it doesn't impact the functionality of the basin.
So, uh, thank you, Jamie, for remembering the who. Um, so I did not see that in the packet, and I'm not um, in a position to know, so that's my concern. I'm just not in a position to know the effect of water by placing a temporary driveway in a small shed in front of the, I, I just don't know um, the answer to that, so that's my conserve, concern, Dave. Um, whether it's a garage, unless someone could speak otherwise, Paul, um, it's a shed, it's a shed, which you put in it, but there is this movement of the car to the street with some type of, you know, you put a car in a small driveway. I don't, again, I don't know the impact of the water.
So, re- regarding the garage, what, the, uh, the, the current house, what, do you have a two, existing two-car garage, Ms. Benson?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. You, you know, strictly going by the zoning code, construction of private garage or private parking for not more than three vehicles, like, I mean, I, it is just, just in comparison to some of the others, uh, hearings that we've had, is people asking for greater than three. This is.
That's exactly right.
So.
Right.
Um, I don't think we have a concern there, um, it is, I don't, so in, in that case, I don't know if there's a difference. It, it's just maybe a construction maybe requirement that's different between a garage and a shed, I, which would, that would be beyond our scope. That would really be with the, with the building commissioner. Uh, I'm, I don't, I'm otherwise unaware of something that would differentiate the shed from a garage in terms of setbacks or, um, or any other zoning requirements. I don't.
I'm, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, um, and actually, um, I'm sorry, uh, Doug, I, you, do you have, uh, do you have any experience with something like that, where there's any sort of difference between a shed and a shed that's really used as a garage?
Not off the top of my head, to be honest, um, you know, Mid is obviously big enough to park a car or a vehicle. Um, but it is really more of a building code question, right? You know, in terms of the scale of the building, um.
Yeah.
You know, and I guess, I guess, quick question I have, um, does the shed have power, or is it simply a shed without power or water, or is there any utilities going to the shed, just out of curiosity, or is it purely just wood frame only?
Purely wood frame only, no utilities.
Okay. That simplifies it, but, yeah, that, I mean, that's, uh, that's sort of my take on it. There's, there's, there's building code which would be different between the two, but I don't, I don't think zoning-wise, I'm not sure we need to differentiate too much, um, so I don't think that's a concern, um, I think between Jamie and Doris, you've raised an interesting question regarding uh, conservation. Um, now, what we, what we can do is if that is the requirement, we can decide as a, as a board, do we want to go ahead and, and approve it, um, based on, on the, on the application, and just one of the conditions is obviously, you know, pending approval by the Conservation Commission, I think would be a logical, um, logical approach. Um, I don't know if there are other concerns with the, with the members that the, uh, it seems that the, the conservation question, um, should be answered, though. I'm sorry, I just, I didn't pick that up myself. That, you know, needing, needing a, um, needing approval from conservation, but you found that within the packet, Doris?
Yeah, it's, it's in what we already.
It, it's in the packet.
It's page twenty-four of the packet.
And then. Christie, did you, did you get, um, a copy of that letter from the Conservation Commission? Or are you aware of it?
So we, I was, it like, in, yes, in regards to that, that was, that letter was gonna be presented at this meeting. That was a, that's how I uh, understood it, and so you guys would have that as well, have that, yeah.
Sorry, you're right, it is in here. I, I'm not sure why I didn't, I didn't pick up on it. I, I apologize for that.
And that's from September twenty-sixth, so.
Right.
There could have been something lined up before this call to have that answer.
I have a quick logistical question. Is the drainage easement uh, between your property and the Homeowners Association, or is the drainage easement between you and the town of South Borough? Who is the who is the beneficiary of the easement, the drainage easement?
Uh, HOA, our HOA, yep.
And does the HOA have any objections? I'm sorry, I, I, I wasn't sure, I'd lost a part, part of an answer regarding like, oh, I got a letter of approval, which was a.
Yeah, they, they don't, and then they, we also have a letter of, um, approval with everyone from the HOA.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly, that's all.
Yep, yep.
But, what page, what page is the letter of approval?
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm sorry.
So it was in, um, when I submitted stuff, it would be under, um, like, there's something that's titled Letter of Support, um, and that has all this, uh, no, sorry, Letter of Support. There's one from Steve Arena, or sorry, not Steve A P Z that we added, and then there should be another PDF in there that has all the signatures of everyone in the HOA. Um, and that was with the initial. I know it was in the initial stuff that I, we submitted. Yeah, I'm happy to resubmit it, but I know, I, yeah. I was, uh, I uploaded it on that initial, but the, if it's workforce, or.
What's that? Is that the, the approval from the HOA?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, it was a, it was a one-word document, um, with all their signatures on it.
I'm looking on viewpoint to see if I can find it.
I think it must have been in with probably the application part with viewpoint.
Well, we're looking for that, um.
Okay.
Do we know if anyone, if anyone wants to s- speak from the.
I don't have any hands up, um, if there's anyone in the public who wants to, just use the raise hand function. No one.
Don't find it.
I am not finding it.
Okay, I, um, now that it was in there, I have, I mean, I have, we have our hard copy, so I'm happy to, um, send along.
Okay.
Um, I know, I think it was also in like the hard copy that I submitted, but yeah, I'm happy to, but I'm.
So it, it
some of those things, we want to, uh, you know, because we, we really need that letter from the association just to make sure there's no issue.
Yeah.
Uh, I definitely.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if we want to continue this, here the other matter, or something along those lines, I just.
Yeah, well, I know, what I, I was, I mean, we could, we could decide to, to, to go forward with.
Subject to.
With conditions, because I did, you know, that there is, there are the statements in here from Conservation saying, oh, a condition is reasonable access for, you know, that you get a report from a PE that certifies reasonable access, and the placement of the sheds does not impact functionality, right? Third condition being the approval of the, of the HOA.
Yeah, receipt, receipt of the approval from.
No, I mean, that would, I don't, I mean, I don't, I guess, I'm not myself seeing why we would need to have them, you know, the, the, uh, the applicant come back if those are the only things we're looking for, and we do in fact have them.
Dave, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with what you just said with, with an approval with conditions.
You are? Okay, alright.
Yeah, I'm comfortable enough with that.
Alright, Jamie and Doris, how do you feel about doing that, about going forward?
Um, I'm, I'm there.
You're breaking up, Doris.
Yeah, we lost you there.
Frozen.
Um, David, I'm sorry, I thought you said there were three, the HOA, the approval from the engineer.
We get them after a vote, and.
Right, right, we, we were just, right, uh, well, I, I'm, I'm referring to that place that you, uh, fortunately, you know, pointed out, where Conservation, they, they listed two conditions.
Yeah.
I'm saying the third condition is, you know, the HOA approval.
Yep, I'm, I'm on board. I think if we had a report addressing those two exact questions, saying it's not an issue and approval by the HOA, then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Doris.
That's okay, Jamie, uh, jumped in, so I'm on board, uh, with the condition, um, if we're following the recommendations on the HOA, as well as those detailed conditions on the, on the P, the PE, um, uh, they just, we just need the paperwork completed.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I, I lost connection, so I don't know if the report for the PE exists, that they've approved, that there's access, and there's, um, but I'm on board with getting.
Okay, well, I, I, I believe, uh, Ms. Benson said she's got it, but it's, it's not in the, the, uh, paperwork that we received, so. I don't think, from what she's telling, this is not a question about whether it exists, it's just hasn't been provided to us.
You're, you're talking about the HOA approval, not the engineer, right? That has not been complete yet, yep.
Right. Mike, does that sound reasonable to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Doug, does, does that sound?
Yeah, no, I think that, that makes sense to me. I'm comfortable with that, and then, Ms. Benson, I just, I, I probably missed it. I know you're moving it forward, the shed forward. Can you remind me why you're moving the shed forward again, closer to the street? I think you explained it, but I must, I broke up.
Yeah, that, the, the resident of forty-three East Main Street requested that, um, just, yeah.
Okay, great, yeah, David, I'm good with that approach.
Okay. Alright.
And, and, sorry, just one more thing. I just want to stipulate that when the engineer comes out, it will be clear where the shed is being moved to, since.
Correct, so then they'll make an opinion on where.
Exactly.
Where, where, where it will be once, yes, yep.
Okay. Alright, well, I think it seems like we're, I know where, where the board is here, but before we can take a vote, we have to close the public hearing, so, uh, we, we only want to do that if we're all set with Ms. Benson, and we don't have anybody else. Laura, you said there's nobody else, so, okay. Um, in that case, I, I think we're, I think we're okay to close the public meeting.
Alright, I'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, second it.
Okay, we have a motion to, to close the public hearing with a second in favor, reply with aye against nay. Mike?
Aye.
Doris? It's frozen again, okay, Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And, uh, William's aye. Doug, I think for this meeting, you're.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, okay, so that closes the public meeting. Uh, I think we've had fairly good discussion here. I think we know where we are. Uh, I believe. Uh, believe what we want to do and. Yeah, and I don't, maybe one of you is looking at it right now, but I think we want to. Uh, vote to approve with the three conditions that I mentioned, and I don't know if anybody want, want to take a stab at that.
So. I mean, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the. I guess approve the shed in in its proposed new location. With the following conditions, the HOA. Approval document and the, in the two conservation. Um, requirements?
Yeah, the re- the re- the uh, report of, from the a PE. That certifies reasonable access. Uh, for the purpose and management of the stormwater features. Uh, remains within the placement of two sheds and the placement of the sheds does not anyway impact functionality and or reduce the storage capacity of the basin. Kind of a mouthful.
As said, yes, that's my proposal.
Okay. Can we, can we use it that way?
Yeah, Laura cap- Laura captured all that perfectly.
Yeah, 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 I'm sure. Um, we need a second.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve as written with the three conditions. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed, nay, Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
William's eye. Right, very good, congratulations. We'll have to write up the decision with and be clear on the the three uh conditions. And obviously, we'll need all those closed before you can, you know, go forward with with the. The uh building commissioner.
Okay, and um, just for logistics, I'm sure I can follow up with Laura, just about how, like the best place for me to submit this information once I get it and. Just logistics in that sense.
If you provide, if you, if you, when you have that information, if you provide it to Laura, she can certainly.
Okay.
Give it to all of us for for us to review.
Okay.
Kristy, I'll follow up with you tomorrow morning, kind of about timeline and next steps and what to expect.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you too.
Okay, so now, we're on to one where you have to announce it.
Yes.
You have to spend a lot of your energy trying to keep me straight, Laura, I do apologize for that.
You're doing great, David. All right, um, I have the applicant here, so I'm gonna move him over while I read this.
Okay.
Okay. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will be holding a public hearing via virtual Zoom meeting Thursday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Seven fifteen PM with regard to the petition of nineteen East Main Street LLC, nineteen East Main Street, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow the reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located in the Residence B zoning district and relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash nineteen.
Thank you.
Um, is there a Matt Bombay C available as well?
I will move him over for you.
He is our engineer, he's with Bowler Engineering in Southborough.
Okay. Um, Paul, you are you, are you a a direct, you're not a director butter here, right?
Yeah, so this is kind of strange tonight that it's like East Main Street night. The first applicant, this applicant, apparently like I'm right outside the bubble, so. I see that on the butter list, like twenty-eight East Main Street was listed. I'm at twenty-nine, so no, I'm not listed as a butter, I didn't receive an a butter's notice. And so, um, I I guess I'm not, uh. I I am not in a butter, likewise, I'm pretty, uh, I'm I'm pretty familiar with the property since it's, it's like four doors down, but.
Right. Okay.
Uh, if if it's okay, I I would certainly, uh, you know, I I certainly don't mind. Um, sitting on this one also.
So, but ju- so just to be clear, you have, you have nothing to gain from uh whatever we decide here time, right?
I I have nothing to gain, nor do, nor, nor do I know or personally know or have a relationship with the applicant.
Okay, great. Um, to me, I think, I think we're, we're probably okay here, okay. Um, if you could identify yourself, uh, name and address or what your role is in the application.
Uh, yeah, my name is Derek Wheeler, I am the owner of uh nineteen East Main, um, I live in uh. Forty-six Marion Street in Natick, Mass. Uh, I am a home builder, I built homes for about twenty years now, um, so I have my own company. And uh, I built in Southborough, a cou- a couple of houses down on Woodland Ave. Or Woodland Road, I can't remember which one of what, uh, if it was Abbott Road, but um, we just finished those up last year. Um, Paul could probably speak to this, it, this house had a pretty significant fire uh last year. Um, and it kind of ended up at my doorstep, um, I I love the location, I love the town. Um, so this is something I I really wanted to do. Um, Matt can kind of speak to the kind of the logistics, it's a, it's a tight lot, it's in in the downtown area, obviously. So it's tight to fit things in there, um, we were trying to get, the biggest issue we're trying to solve is to get a two-car garage. And that's kind of why we're here, um, and the way the lot lays out is that. We could push the house back, but it starts encroaching on the septic system. Uh, mo- most importantly, the septic tanks, and so we're trying to avoid. Re-doing something that's actually functioning perfectly, and it actually has T five compliance, I don't want to rip up something that's working. Um, so that garage is encroaching into the R, the residential B. Uh, setback by about three feet. But it's within the residential C district, we went to the uh building commissioner to get some clarification. On that, we were trying to get a building permit without having to be before this board. To not bother you guys, um, and he said. Uh, he didn't feel comfortable issuing a building permit without you reviewing it. So we didn't push too hard and that's why we're here. Um, when it comes down to specifics on, in details, um. And setbacks and what's required with the septic, uh, Matt, Matt is the expert, so I'll defer to him. Um, a lot of the, the, the page is the most important, in my view, is the. Proposed site plan. Um, that kind of shows the overlay of the, the future house on top of the existing house.
So, so, do, am I looking at it correctly, you're basically making it. No, no worse in terms of setbacks than it is now, correct?
Um, so currently, the garage would be about three feet further out than what is there now. That, that, that is really the encroachment, uh, it's still within the residential C setback, it's just outside the residential B setback.
So that, with the current garages?
There is no current garage on this house, so.
Yeah, the, the, the room that might look like a garage, Dave, is, was like a, was like a. Family room or sunroom to on, to like to the left, you know, the left side of the house.
Yeah, and that's actually where the fire started and then spread through the kitchen and then through the attic, so the structure of the house is. Not something I would trust to build on, so if. God forbid, this didn't work out, I would have to rebuild from scratch down to the foundations, it's just. I'm still without a garage.
Okay, so, uh, Paul, when you, when you say to the left, you, are you looking at it from, if you're standing in the street, looking down the driveway?
Yeah, so the front, yeah, if you're, so the, the one picture they show where it's boarded up, the front elevation. Yes, you can see it, you can see it, chimney, to the left of the chimney is a boarded up area. That's, that's, again, that was, that was not a garage, it was a sunroom, but that's where we're, that's what we're talking about here.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking, I I was actually looking at the site plan. So, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the site.
Went to Google Earth, you would see the old structure and building as well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, cause Dave, the site plan is. Well, it it might be confusing, cause the front elevation is. From the top of the site plan, looking back at the house, so it it it's a different orientation perhaps.
Yeah, yeah. But it, but I guess what it, what it looks like to me, and I I I hopefully I'm not uh repeating myself here, but. It looks like the general outline of the existing structure. If you overlay what you're trying to do. Is, you're, you essentially have this same. Side setbacks, correct? Oh, i- i- if not slightly better?
Um, pretty close, um, it's, it's really the front setback that, that we're here in front of this board for.
Okay. Yeah, so is that where I see? Looks like twenty, twenty-six feet to the steps? Um, I'm pulling it up now.
I.
Just looking at where it is. Twenty-five, yeah.
Well, it looks like it's saying it's twenty-seven feet to the, to the garage from the street.
Yeah, it is. Twenty-six feet to the existing stairs at the existing building.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, if I'm basically with Bowler, I introduced myself, but I'm someone representing Derek.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, yeah. Okay. Yeah, and and we're, yeah, currently there is no garage, but you're. You're pretty much.
Yeah, it's all really close, if if I had a foot to give and push the house back, I would have. But then I'd be at the Board of Health asking for a variance from them, so.
So, I, so are, is, is this a a a a tear down and rebuild, or you just, you're?
This would be, uh, uh, tear down and rebuild, um, I've I've done a few renovations and. I'm not comfortable renovating something that's been in significantly damaged by fire, so. If I did have to rebuild it, it would be, uh. Down to the foundation and I'm not even comfortable with that, to be honest.
So, okay. Well, I I again, I I, I'm, I guess I'm getting off track a little bit, I'm I'm asking more. Building code things, and this is, this is zoning we're talking about, I guess I'm just trying to be clear. Is your plan to bring the structure down and start again from the foundation?
I am, yes, I'm planning to. Completely raise the structure and building completely brand new from scratch.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Um, but go ahead, I don't know if you had, you have more you wanted to.
No, uh, just, uh, we're here to answer questions, I I know the site plan can be a little bit confusing, it it. It is very close, um. And we tried to shoehorn it in different ways and we just couldn't get it to fit with that uh septic tank in the back, uh, so.
Okay. Yeah, that, you're, it it shows very clearly where the tank is. And then you have a leach field that's further past that, correct?
Correct.
Box, yeah. Okay. Um, I I mean, I will say generally, I think the board has looked at. Uh, other se- uh, projects that maybe are a little bit similar where it's an existing non-conforming, right? It's, it's pre-zoning or whatever the case may be. And uh, the the proposal is to do something to improve upon it while not. Making the, you know, non-conformant end worse, I think the. In fact, we might have even made that to be, you don't really have to worry about it. Um, but I'm just, you know, generally speaking, I think the zoning board has looked at something to say, well. You know, you, you're, you're supposed to have, let's just say, fifteen foot setback, but it's fourteen, well. But the current property is fourteen, so you're not making it, you're not making it worse, I think here he's saying it's thirteen point eight. And you're showing it as fourteen point one, so it's slightly worse, but but not much. Is that correct?
Um. I'm not sure which setback you're referring to.
I I I'm, I'm, I guess I'm looking at.
It's a, it's slightly better in, in some of the side setbacks, uh, on the, um. I guess, I'm trying to get my directions right, the west side. On the east side, it's within a few inches, and then the front is. Off by about a foot and a half, I would say.
Okay. All right, um, I'm, I'm gonna let some of the other members uh ask questions instead of it all being about whatever I want to know. Um. Paul, why don't we start with you, do you have any, any questions?
Uh, I I can be honest, I really, I don't have any questions, I'm 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 following along here. I guess I have the benefit of uh being pretty familiar with the property being right near me. Um, yes, it did have a lot of extensive damage. So I, I guess I have more comments than anything, it had extensive damage, so I, I agree. And again, I get it, I, I'm involved with development, it, yeah, from a practical standpoint, it's best to, it's best to raise and rebuild here. Um, I, I, I get, you know, what the applicant's going for is to have a. Have a two-car garage associated with the house, which I don't think is a. You know, I don't think is a horrible thing to be thinking of or asking for. Um, yes, it's, you know, it's it's a little encroaching on the front setback, but. I don't, I mean, I don't think that's gonna have a negative impact on. On the, the street or 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 anything else, um, and it's not that, you know, it's not that. Much too close to really, you know. You know, it's, 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 it's close, it's close enough where where we've had other people. Or other applicants looking for that we've kind of like, oh, yeah, it's not, you know, it's not that bad, so, okay. And I, and I feel that kind of falls under that, uh, under that heading there and, uh. And I, and I actually think it's a rather, uh, you know, the, whatever the rendering, the elevation. Uh, I think is a rather, um, is rather attractive looking home, so I think would. You know, would, would benefit the, the neighborhood and it's, you know, it's, it's fairly consistent, I think, with what. Some other new construction properties that have been raised and built on this street. So, um, I don't, I don't think it's something that would be, you know, out of place either, so, um. So I have no questions, just those comments, so, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Uh, Jamie?
Um, yeah, I'll echo what Paul said, I I drove by and I I drive down that street all the time as well. Um, I don't see a problem with this build, um, there are two-story houses right next to it. And like Paul said, um, the newer houses on that street, this, this kind of. Agrees with what we've already approved in that area, or if it didn't need approval, that's been put up. Um, so I think it would be a benefit to the neighborhood, and unless there was some, a butter issue with it, I don't see an issue with it.
Thank you, Mike?
Yeah, very briefly, like, uh, to me, just like the last applicant. Given the fact that the septic tank was on the property, basically, the the lot, the retention pond, you know, she met those criteria for variance. For this case, it's again, you know, is this gonna be consistent with the neighborhood? Is it, uh, is this, you know, change with respect to the encroachment? For a pre-existing non-conforming home substantial, I don't feel it is. Uh, I don't have any questions, uh, as long as, uh, unless, unless there's objections raised by the abutters. I I I have no issue with this.
Thank you. Doris?
I have no issue with this, I think it's the best use of the property, and it seems, um. It's non-conforming, um, under rules from nineteen sixty-six, it would almost be burdensome to. It's not material in my mind to go up the foot in the front. Um, and and it's in character with the new homes that are going up, it'd be improvement to the neighborhood, and then I said, well, what would go there? Um, and I don't think those options are good, good either, so it'd be a little bit larger home, I suspect. Cause you're going up a floor, you got about sixteen hundred square feet, it was.
Uh, well, the footprint sixteen hundred, um, a lot of that, I think like five hundred of that's in the garage, but.
Okay, so now we have a thousand down and, and then we have a thousand up or something.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think the overall square footage of the house is twenty, twenty-nine eleven.
Oh, that's a substantial sized house, it'll look good, but that's not.
You pick up the space over the garage, so.
Uh, okay, all right, sure, um, but I don't have a problem with the, because of the non-conforming nature. Of what would you put in there with the kind of housing that go, that fits in with Southburn, that street now? So, I don't have questions, David, no.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Doug?
Yeah, so more of, uh, more of a procedural or the zoning question, um, I'm looking at, um, Matthew, your memo. Um, which references obviously the zoning code.
Yep.
Which is, uh, you know, si- one seventy-four dash eight three E. Um, and obviously, you know. It seems like this, this lot was, you know. It laid out pre-nineteen sixty-six, so it sounds like you guys are applying for a special permit, not a variance, right? You're really applying for a special permit for non-conforming use, just for clarity, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, that section I referenced, um, the eight-point-three, the Residence C district actually would allow building by right, um, the building inspector had indicated. Um, the building inspector had indicated since there was already a a house here that that we should request a special permit, which which we were happy to do, but.
Yeah, because that was your note too. It said that would apply really to empty lots. But it doesn't really say that in one seventy-four eight-three dash E, right? I'm just I'm just looking at it, not not to get into the weeds, but.
Yeah, we had a little. Yeah, we had we had a discussion with them and we, that was his determination and. We, that's his determination and that's his right to have that, so that's why we're in front of him.
So he he's basically saying he's not sure that that section is applicable because technically it's not an empty lot. Is that what he said to you guys? Just for clarity?
Correct, it would apply to undeveloped lots, not a previously developed lot.
Um, okay, I mean, so well, first of all, I don't, I mean, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I don't have any issue with this. I think, you know, it's a great. You know, repurposing of a single-story house into a two-story, you know, home, which is pretty consistent along, you know, that main street district. Um, and I don't have any concerns with it, the twenty-seven feet. Particularly because, you know, the residency district would allow, you know, twenty-five feet, you know, um, but I I think it's more just. This, I guess, a procedural question, David, more about, just want to make sure, you know. That we're grant, I guess that's the thing, we're interpreting basically. Differing from the building inspector, are we basically interpreting, you know, this section different to say? Not an empty lot, it's just, you know, because you guys are applying under special permit for this relief, not a variance. So just want to be clear. So you're asking for interpretation that this would apply to a house. Already built in a lot, you know, it's existing non-conforming and that this is the section that's applicable and so empty lot is not the 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 parameter here.
No.
That is, yeah, that is correct. Um, and like I said, we didn't, we didn't want to. Uh. Get in debate with the building inspector, uh, or commissioner, I that that's, I think he wanted to defer to you for for. Your view on this, so that's why we were happy to bring it and just not make any waves, so.
No, I just didn't, again, I just wanted to state that for Claire, just from my understanding of how what you guys were asking for, but again. I don't I don't have any issue with it and, you know, David, and. I don't have any issue with interpreting it that way too as well, whether it's empty lot or a lot with a house built on it, um. Um, you know, it would be a bit arduous for someone to try to rebuild that, you know, based upon the new. Um, R C R B District guideline, so I'm good.
Yeah, I'm I'm not the the, um, I mean, the application that I see Doug, it says, uh, it does. Reference one seventy-four nineteen reconstruction of an existing non-performing structure. So that's what I'm looking at. Did you, I'm sorry, did you did you pick up some other zoning that was referenced?
Well, I was I was just noting it was a special permit, so that's fine, but. There was a lot of reference though to. In the the Bowler letter, there was a reference to this other section, so, you know. Again, this is more procedural. I don't I don't have any issue with the, um, the proposal, what they're trying to do. I just want to make sure that we're acting, you know.
I think Matt's letter, Matt's letter was more of a clarification on why we're in front of this board.
Okay.
And kind of help explain just how we how we got to where we're at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Now, I yeah, I see what you're talking about, Doug, um. I I I think procedurally we're okay because the 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 application that does say one seventy-four nineteen. And I think that's that's appropriate, so.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right, um, I I don't I don't think I have anything more to add. I I would agree that, um. You're you're basically using the existing footprint. It's an improvement. Um, it fits in with the neighborhood. There's a house maybe two doors down, it's very similar construction that's new, so. I don't see it, it's, you know, sort of stepping outside what's in the neighborhood. Uh, and I think the intention in a lot of these cases is, look, this is an old lot, this is the way it's set up. Yeah, you'd love to have all these setbacks, but it's it's not the way they did the lots back whenever, so. I think I'm good with it too, so. Um, do we have any anybody, uh, who wants to speak, Laura? Anybody got their hand up?
Um, we have one attendee, but they do not have their hand up.
Okay, all right, um, well, whoever you are, if you'd like to say anything, this is your opportunity. But you don't have to. It's not required. Okay, well. Do we have something or no?
No, sorry.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Um, all right, if that's the case, if there's no other question, uh. For the the two applicants here this evening, then I don't see why we wouldn't close the public hearing and take a vote.
Well, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion has been made to close with a second. All in favor, say aye. Against, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And William's aye. So that will close the public part of the meeting. Um, having said that and having listened to the discussion, I don't think anybody has any concerns here. Uh, so, um, I think we could take a motion to approve the special permit as written. Without conditions?
Um, sure, I'll make a motion to approve this special permit as as requested or as written.
Second.
All right, motion to approve with a second. In favor, respond with aye. Against, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And William's aye as well. Very good.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep, all right, thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. Okay. So. This is where we don't go off the rails. Um. Laura, what else do we have on the agenda? We have minutes to approve, right?
We have two sets of minutes, so the first one is the minutes from September twentieth.
Okay, that was twelve Penn Lane. Uh, that was the added garage, that's correct. Or, yeah, extra bit, yeah, yeah, they're adding a garage. Um. I did not see a problem with those minutes. Uh, who about the any of the other members?
I was not on that call, so.
Okay.
I don't know if I won't be part of the vote, I assume. Yeah, just abstain.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't, I didn't see any problem with the minutes. So I'll I'll make them, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. As written.
Second.
Okay, is that, I'm sorry, is that, you said there are two sets of minutes?
Oh, I jumped in front of everyone, I'm sorry.
No, yeah, that was just the the September twentieth was the first one.
That's what I thought we were voting on.
Yeah, I don't see the second one right now.
The second one is, it's just one page. It's from November second when we continued.
Oh.
I just figured we'd get it out of the way.
Okay, all right, all right, um. Sure, uh, did 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 anybody else have any concerns with the minutes? I assume the answer is no. Speak now forever, yeah. Okay, uh, so so Paul, is that to approve both sets of minutes?
Yeah, I I made a motion to, yeah.
Okay.
Minutes as written.
Okay, I'll second that for both, both sets of minutes.
Okay. All right, motion to approve the minutes as written for both meetings. Uh, all in favor, respond with aye. Against, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Jamie? You were not there, right?
I was not the first, but I was at the second.
Do we need to do two votes?
So we should do two.
Jamie wasn't at one and Doris wasn't at the other.
Yeah. Proceedurally, I think we should do do it as as separate votes anyways.
Okay, sorry, that, yeah, you're right, my mistake. All right, Paul, the September twentieth minutes.
Yes, so I'm I, yeah, back to that, so I'm making a motion to accept the September twentieth minutes as written.
Okay. With a second? I'll second it, how's that?
Oh, good.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, reply with aye. Against, nay. Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
William's aye and Jamie abstain?
Stand.
Okay, now the the second minutes, I'm sorry, Laura, where was that from again?
Uh, November second, it's page sixty-seven of the packet.
Oh.
One page.
We just, okay, we just continued, right? Yeah, yeah.
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 Okay.
And. So, like likewise, it looks looks pretty good to me and I'd I'd make a motion to accept the minutes as written for November second.
Uh, second.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, in a attendance that night was, who exactly?
It was everybody but Doris and Doug.
Everybody but Doris and Doug, okay, all right. We have a motion to approve the November second minutes. Uh, all in favor, respond with aye. Against, nay. Uh, Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
William's is aye as well. Uh, Doris, you abstain?
Yep.
Okay, all right, um, Doug, you, yeah, you you also were not there, okay. All right, those are approved, um. What do we have next on the agenda? Was that the?
Proposed warrant article.
The what?
The proposed warrant article.
Yeah, um, so. I looked at what you had and I I think we talked about that being the basis of discussion. Essentially, what we want to do is just, um. Propose a a an article, a warrant article for town meeting to put a two-year. To give a special permit, isn't it?
Yeah.
A two, a two-year, um, basically a limit. It's not exercised within two years, it expires. So, um, Laura had sort of begun, uh, to to write that up. I I think we just sort of look at that as similar to. Other language we have in the zoning code. Uh, we don't need to make it too complicated. I think we're already set on two years. Um, so did we have something to review that we wanted to to look at tonight, Laura?
Oh, I had sent you guys just, um, like a draft kind of jumping off point. Um, so we need to submit a placeholder warrant article by December twelfth. Um, so I don't know if you guys want to figure out how to get that together because we do not have another meeting between now and then.
Okay, they need it by December twelfth, okay. Um.
Laura? Yeah, just quickly, uh, for some reason, I I it's the first time I'm looking at this. Did we get this last week? I just wanted. Did we get this last week or did we get it this week? This more revision?
I think I sent it Monday.
Excuse me for a second.
Two days, two days.
I'm not feeling great. I'm I'm just really run down. I've had a long day. Um, am I needed for a vote or anything? Just because like I I just, my head's swimming a little bit.
Um. I don't, I don't think it's nee, no, I don't think you're necess, you're needed for another vote, Mike. We have nothing else.
Yeah.
I think we wanted to talk about this. Uh, there's another agenda item and then it's just discussion of next meetings.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd love to just kind of jump off my head swimming.
Okay, I don't think that's a problem.
Awesome, sorry and thanks.
No problem. Uh, yeah, I'm not, now, now I'm not finding what you what you sent, um, oh, there it is, I got it. Um, hmm. What, what sort of format do we need by December twelfth? That I I I thought, didn't we say it's almost more a placeholder or is it the for, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just just a placeholder with kind of similar to what I did. I talked to Mark Purple about it and he said, you know, just a placeholder, he can work on formatting. And we can work on finalizing the language after, but. Um, yeah, we have that December twelfth deadline for the placeholder.
Okay, all right, and I don't, I mean, this is. I don't think this is something we necessarily need a vote on. I mean, this is this is a warrant article. To be voted on at the town meeting, right? So. Um, I guess I'm, I'd just be looking for inputs from anybody on the board regarding concerns. About making the change, a specific, uh, language we need to have in there. And and that might be something that Mike is more interested in, or or maybe you are, Doug, I don't know. Or maybe you are, Jamie, I don't know. I don't want to, I don't want to limit anybody here, but. Um.
So David, I just have a quick question, um, because obviously you guys know I'm in the real estate world, so I've done a few special permits, the the. Is it, the timeframe is not specified and so it's the specified timeframe or is it actually to reduce it from three to two years? I'm just curious of the background of the desire to make it two versus three more, just from my background. Um, you guys obviously have had a bunch of experience, but that just would be helpful for me to understand the context, because I've read the language. I mean, it's pretty straightforward as a placeholder, um, but I was just more curious of the background.
I I think it was more, Laura, didn't, are you the one that noticed that we had nothing there for it? So it's not a reduction, it's filling in a gap where we had nothing.
Okay, because I think, as large as you said, like, I think by statute, you can be up to three years, right? You can pick anything you want, right? So it could be one, two or three years. And it sounded like, Larry, you you picked two more because it's consistent with the variance, right? If you don't exercise a variance within a certain period of time, just to be consistent?
Um, no, so I, we had talked about this a couple of months ago, um. And we had kind of tossed around the idea of two. Because that's consistent with what um, planning board does. So the special permits issued by planning board expire within two years. This. Um, by law change, by the way, would also impact their special permits as well. Um, so they do two, so we had kind of tossed around two just to be consistent between boards. So that applicants weren't getting confused of, you know, it expires differently because it was a different board.
And the, does the planning board, I'm assuming it's the case, if someone is coming up on the two-year expiration, they're allowed to go back and attempt to renew it? Um, or how does that work if it's set as expiration on two years? Do they have the right to extend or is it a whole new application? More just out of curiosity.
Great question.
Hmm. Paul, do you, do you have history on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm involved with some things, oddly enough, a lot of what I'm, where I'm. Working right now is a is a is a three-year, but yeah, you can. You know, I'm okay with two years and then, yes, you do typically have the ability prior to it expiring to. You know, get on the agenda to to ex, you know, to extend it, um, especially if there's, you know. I mean, I guess sometimes it can be for no reason other than you just haven't gotten around to doing it yet, but there's. But, uh, so there's typically got to be some, there's got to be some reason why, uh. You know, why you need the extension other than you just want to keep it going into perpetuity type thing, but, um. So, yeah, that's 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 what I'm usually familiar with.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm definitely fine with two years. I mean, as a con, I mean, like, that's pretty typical in other towns that I've seen too as well. Um, okay, so and making it consistent with the planning board does makes sense. I was just more curious about the renewal, right? You know, do they have a renewal right for the year or not? Or is it just simply they're doing a new application, which again, I I don't, two years is a long period of time. Um, and usually when people get in trouble, it's more of not because they didn't do it, something happened, you know, recession or something as, you know, but. But two years is fine with me.
Well, I mean, we can also think about, uh, the details of the language being that, you know. We allow, I don't know if that's something separate, but, you know, we could consider that, that the language says you have two years. And maybe you you specify in there, there's a process for, you know, applying for an extension.
Yep. That's a, that's not a bad approach too, where it's two years and then you have a chance at a one-time, one-year extension. And again, that's where also I'd be curious town council's thoughts, you know, on it, but.
Yeah.
That seems a very fair way to do it, because again, I agree with Paul, you don't want it to be open-ended, right? Because that's not.
Right.
The intent, because at also at some point, if you're three years from the issuance of a permit at that point, two plus one. A lot of things could have changed and you may want a full review. So I think it's also good if there is a renewal, right? You do want it to sunset. Um, because otherwise, it's just an open-ended, you know, they keep coming back year after year and that's not, that's not the intent either, because you may want a full review at some point.
Agreed, yep. But I I mean, I would, I would think that we can, um, again, we have a, we we at least have something that we can put in. Put in place for December twelfth, then you're right, we can, we can tweak that with town council and and Mark Purple. And and try to keep it aligned with planning board, uh, policies.
It's and al- also mind you that that means that you've started your project. You know, so if it's something like large in scale, once you've started it, you know, the, obviously, the the, you know, the variance would be, you know, would remain active. Um, so it's not saying you have to have everything done and completed in two years, it's just.
Yeah.
You know, just means you need to, you you need, you need to have started it within two years.
You know, if if we're, yeah, if make a placeholder. Um. With that, with that.
Doris, you're breaking up.
Yeah. Yeah.
It did two days before the meeting. Yeah, I'm sorry. Hear me now?
I think so.
Yeah, so I was to take, I'll repeat my, um, we're just trying to get a placeholder, so I'm good with that. Uh, uh, as far as commenting further, I'll do what I need to. We actually maybe put input into the warrant, um, I just got it two days ago, and I didn't read it. And then, I didn't read the, uh, cross-reference it to what's in the code, and I'd like to get. Diligence, I, I just have a reservation of whether two years or three years with the sunset. I, I don't have my head around, um, what the best thing to do with rewriting it, I, I, so I don't have any other comments. I need more time.
Yeah.
Please.
But you, but, but you feel like we're okay to go, go with it as a placeholder, and obviously refine it?
Yeah, I'm always okay if we have something inconsistent, Laura, if we have something inconsistent in the code, and we want to tighten it up, because the first, my first reading of it. I can't follow it, so that always starts me, I cannot follow the original code, and it definitely needs work, so I could, I could say that. And then, but is the answer the second, I, I can't say that yet, I don't. I would also, I'll read it, it won't take me a lot of time, but I, I'm gonna read it further, and maybe we carry the discussion. Maybe that's the thing to do, carry the discussion. Next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
And I used to the comment, I would say, I mean, I'd definitely be curious of the planning board's thoughts on the renewal, cause right now, the way it's written, it's two years and it simply lapses. Right, so there is no opportunity to renew for a short period of time, but I'd be curious more of the planning board's also thoughts on the extension, but. That would just seem fair, two years plus a one-year extension, and which would still be in the purview of the granting board too, but, but again, that's just a placeholder, so.
Yeah, okay. Jamie, do you have any, any thoughts, or?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I leave this to greater minds.
Wow, I don't know if you're talking to somebody in the meeting or out of the meeting, Jamie. Uh, sorry, Doris, you, yeah, I, that kind of.
No, 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 I, I, I like the, uh, Doug's. Idea, um, because heart is always.
You're having a tough connection night, Doris.
If, if someone wants to change or extend, I like that idea, I just don't know the problem. Uh, you know, been on the board now as an alternate, and then a permanent member for several, it's about three years now, um, I don't remember appeal situation. So that's where I'm kind of stuck, why somebody would be filing or extending.
Yeah, I think Doug had the, had the right idea, you, you get, you get one opportunity to extend, not like, well, you're gonna extend, then you're gonna extend again. Not, you get one, you extend it one year, and that's it, and if that still doesn't work, come back and reapply. I think that's reasonable, but, um, it does seem like we could take that, and then maybe, you know, maybe more proactively. Try working that with Jay, uh, and the planning board, to say, what, what exactly is the language? Because, do you remember, do you recall what the deadline is to have the actual language in for the town meeting?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah.
I wanna say it sometime in January.
Yeah.
Um.
We have a little bit of time.
I can see if I can find it. I mean, what I can do in the meantime, between now and our next regular meeting is December twentieth, is I could. Put together something more generic.
Okay.
That doesn't call out specific sections, those were kind of just places that I thought it could fit, but. Obviously, it's you, um, so I can put together something a little bit more generic as a placeholder, I'll send it to you guys, you can give me. Yeah or nay, um, and then. I can also reach out to Karina to talk to her about what their process is. Cause this will impact them, cause it's for all special permits, regardless of the special permit granting authority, so.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right, yeah, right, that makes sense. So yeah, we should, we should try to work that with them, um. Okay. Um. I had something there, but now I don't, okay. All right, yeah, we'll keep working on that. Um, oh, I, I was gonna say, I know, you know, Craig's last meeting, he kind of had an objection to the zoning board doing it, and he thought the planning board should do it, but. You know, I spoke to Karina about it, and, you know, the reality is that planning board is looking for somebody to be a sponsor, it's not planning board. I mean, yes, they facilitate, but, you know, a, a warrant article can come from anybody, so, I don't. I personally had no problem with the ZBA sponsoring the article, I don't, I don't think that's a problem, I think if we do that. And we do that with town council and the planning board, I, I don't think there should be any concerns, I don't think it's that complicated, so. I think we should just do it. Okay. And the last, we have one more thing, which, which is just upcoming meetings, correct?
Um, we have one more thing before that, is just. The town clerk requested some amendments.
Yeah, um, yeah, could you remind me what that is?
Sure, so, um, Jim Hegarty, the town clerk, had reached out to see if, uh, the board would be willing to amend the application form. Forms, all of them, um, his first request was to remove that little box at the top right corner of our application forms. That say town clerk filing date, because they don't use it, they just stamp it wherever they want. Um, so that was the first request, was just to remove that from the form, the second was to remove the requirement. That the applicant submit the butters list to the, as part of their town clerk package. So we currently have them submit one hard copy package to the town clerk, and then one electronic copy to us. And Jim has asked if we would take out the butters list from his package.
Okay. Uh, so, I, w- w- where does the butters list come from?
So the butters list is a requirement for us that the applicant needs to get from the assessor's office.
We need it, but the town clerk doesn't need it.
That's what he's saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think he's right, I, I, I mean, I don't know what, I, I mean, he, he knows his business better than I do, I mean, if he says he doesn't need that a butters list. I can see where we do, I can see where he doesn't. I, I don't really have a problem with that, any, any, any thoughts from? The other board members?
Fine to save a couple trees, if that's, it's a hard copy.
Right.
Agreed. Okay. I think. Um, hmm, do we actually need to vote on that, because it, that, we do.
We do, yeah, any amendment to the application form requires a vote.
Okay, all right. Okay, um. All right, so one is remove. The, 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 the dates submitted?
It's the town clerk filing date box.
Okay, filing date. And two is remove. Requirement. For a butters list. To town clerk, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so. The motion is to amend. Both the, the special permit and the variance form, correct? To remove the town clerk filing date box, and to also remove the requirement for, and a butters list. Be submitted to the town clerk. Okay. Does that get us?
I think we have three, three application forms that have that.
Oh, there's three?
There's three, yeah.
So, uh, well, there's the variance, the special permit.
There's a, there's a general one that covers special permits, variances, and appeal, there's a accessory apartment one.
Okay.
And then there's a non-conforming, use them structure form.
Okay, I'll never get all that right. Okay, so. The motion is to amend our three applications for, uh, special permit, variance. Um. Hmm. Appeal and, uh, accessory apartment. And for all three to remove the town clerk filing date, and to also remove the requirements for, and a butters list to be submitted to the town clerk. Is that all of it?
I think so.
That was, that was my motion.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend our three forms. All in favor, reply with aye, against nay, Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And Williams is aye as well. Okay, very good, so. Jim's suggestion is, uh, approved, so we can amend those forms. Right, now we're at the point where we can talk about the next meetings, right? No?
I'm sorry.
There's one more?
There's just one more, it's really quick, I promise, um, just the twenty twenty-four meeting dates and filing deadlines, um. It was towards the end of the packet.
Oh, was it really?
If, if you guys, it's page. Sixty-eight. So it's essentially, it's the third Wednesday of every month, with the exception of, I think, three, which are highlighted. And those three, one is April vacation, so I moved it to the fourth week, one is Juneteenth, so I moved it to the fourth week. And there was one more, I think, so essentially, those three highlighted ones are just the fourth week of the month, instead of the third, because of holidays. Or vacations.
Yeah, you move, you move the February one too, for, for whatever reason, I guess.
Is the meeting scheduled up here in the agenda packet?
Yeah, it's the last page.
Yeah.
Okay, I can go on.
I, I'm fine with this, I, I know I can't be here on June twenty-sixth, and July seventeenth would be questionable too. But, I, I mean, if other people are available, that's fine.
Well, I, I don't fundamentally have any problem with any of this or that.
Yeah, I have no known conflicts at this point.
Again, I don't, I don't know what I'm doing next week, but.
That's what I was gonna say. Um, hmm. Let me move forward a month. Oh, goodness.
I tried to avoid weeks that, like, this year, we had to reschedule because of school vacation weeks or things like that, so I tried to avoid that, but.
Um, I don't know that I'm looking at the right email, I, I, I'm not, I'm not finding it, but I, I don't have an objection. So I think we're okay.
So we're moving.
Go ahead.
Uh, to the twenty-fourth of January, that's fine, although, we'll be remote on the twenty, we stay remote, right? On the twenty.
For which one?
January is, it's still the seventeenth, it shows.
Yeah.
And. I'm looking. And school week, we're moving it to the. We're not, it's the twenty-first on the school?
Twenty-fourth.
There was.
In February?
Oh, February is to the twenty.
Yeah, February moved because of February break, I wasn't sure, people with kids.
Okay, March is the twentieth.
Mm-hmm.
And then May? Or April is school to the twenty-fourth?
Yes, cause of April vacation.
Was there anything forward from that, that should all work? Except for one, I'm in Florida in January, but it doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, I mean, we can still do remote, um, the act that was signed into law is good until twenty twenty-five, so.
I can make them all, I can make them all, okay, I'm gonna have to just update my, uh, calendar when I get off the call, okay. Fine.
Okay.
I can't go forward further than that, it's like.
Yeah, no.
That's fine.
Um, I'm only out of country when I get into May and June.
Okay.
So we, we should be, we're okay with the, the dates as Laura has them listed?
I'm okay, yep.
Okay. Okay.
I'm okay.
What else do we have, Laura?
Now, it's just the next. Yeah, then, it's just the next meetings, um, so we have the next hearing for Park Central, November twenty-ninth. That's gonna be at the townhouse, just a reminder, um, then we have December thirteenth. Is the initial public hearing for one twenty Turnpike Road, their comprehensive permit and a special permit. Two different applications.
Right.
At the same time, I'm waiting for confirmation on a location for that. Um, I should have that by the end of the week, cause public hearing notice has to go out next week anyways, so. I will let you guys know, it'll either be at, at the townhouse or the public safety building, again.
Okay.
Um, and then we have December twentieth is a special, that's our regular meeting, and we just have one application for that. So.
Okay.
Not too bad, that one will be Zoom.
Okay, all right, good, good, good. And what's, what's that application?
It's a special permit for two fifty Turnpike Road, um.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
As far as I can tell, not related to their proposed forty B.
Yeah, yeah, that, they've been talking about that, that they have something else they had to clear.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So. We're gonna be busy.
Yeah, I guess so, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and that's all we've got on the agenda tonight.
That's it.
Oh, boy.
So Paul?
There we go. I'd, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second, mo- motion to adjourn has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, against nay, Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams, aye. All right, thanks very much, everybody.
All right. See you next week. Two weeks, two weeks.
Two weeks, have a good Thanksgiving.
Okay, see, have a good Thanksgiving, take care, bye-bye.
I know.